Bag time.
No worries. Bingo. Alrighty. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call to order the March 16th, 2022 board meeting and remind everyone to please mute your audio when not speaking, as well as state your name prior to making a comment or motion and a second for an action item. We'll begin by asking each commissioner to please respond with a "here" when I call out their name. Commissioner Bagmeil?
I am here.
Good evening. Commissioner Doan?
I am here also.
Good evening as well. Commissioner Duggan?
Here.
Good evening, neighbor. And Commissioner Schmidt?
Here.
Good evening. Wonderful. Let's start out this evening with a report from our chief executive officer and management staff.
Thank you and good evening. Let me make sure I'm going to the right side here. All right. Portland crypto-spiridium results for the month of February 2022. The Portland Water Bureau reported two cryptosporidiomosis detections in water samples collected from the Bull Run headworks. Portland Water Bureau will continue increased sampling four times per week until there are at least three weeks without any detections. The Oregon Health Authority has determined that the public does not need to take additional protections at this time. Complete results of Portland's crypto-sprity monitoring are posted on the city's website. So this next, I got a couple of slides here and this is in response to a request from Commissioner Doan to know the status of where we're at with the class compensation study and kind of what we're doing and where we're going. So I'm going to read through these and please feel free to ask questions as they come up. So the Taunton Valley Water District has done comparison of jobs on a case-by-case basis with regional entities over the years. So it's not been necessarily consistent, but we've, over the years, we've done some looking to get some feel for it. What I want to make clear is that that work is not the equivalent of a comprehensive class compensation study is. The last time the district undertook a true comprehensive class comp study was in 1993. The last significant study was done in 2006, but it didn't have all of the elements of a full class comp study. And so what are the elements? Well, a full class comp study includes assessing the district's compensation system, reviewing and updating job descriptions for each job, determining appropriate comparable entities, evaluating compensation in the market to changes made with job classification systems. So there's a number of steps involved. Probably one of the more important steps, in my opinion, that needs to occur is there, on some sort of regular basis, there needs to be a reconciliation of a person's job with the manager. Because what happens to people over time, especially outstanding employees, is, hey, you did great work on this. Are you willing to take this on? How about this? Will you take this on? And it doesn't take very long before somebody who is doing a job has a lot more responsibility than what their job actually says, and it doesn't necessarily get recognized. And so doing this reconciliation on a regular basis, where you actually sit down and you have the manager review the job and you have the employee review the job, and what you end up with, and the times I've done this, more frequently than not, you have an employee who says, here's all the things I'm doing, and a manager who's going, oh, I didn't know you were doing all that. I thought you were just doing this. So, you know, that's why you do these. So that's one of the important steps in this process. That then leads to understanding when I'm comparing a particular job, does that job, you know, whatever that title is, is it truly a real comparable? So in other words, let me use an example here. If I'm taking a water operator and I say, I'm going to compare this water operator job to a water operator over in a neighboring entity. Well, the first challenge I have is the neighboring entity oftentimes has water operator one, water operator two, water operator three, sometimes four, and I've even seen it go up to five. So we don't, we don't have that. We have the generic, you know, water operator. And we don't, you know, we recognize in terms of compensation, over time, their pay goes up within that, within that job. But it makes it really hard to compare, is the point. And then if they have responsibilities within their job description that aren't actually a direct comparable, you don't, you're not, you don't have a direct comparable. It makes it really hard to compare. So that's why that job, looking at the job in getting both the manager and the employee to agree on what the job is that somebody's doing, that's a really critical first step in the process. Then you look at the comparables. So let me go to the next slide here. So here's where we're at in the timeline. Our goal is to have a consultant begin work by the end of May on this, on the comp study. And I just mentioned the managers and staff review the job descriptions and do this comparison. That's really the first thing out of the gates that you typically do. And then the other thing that we need is a list, a recommended list of comparable entities. We're in a very different job market today than what we have been historically. So people are far more willing to move. They're far more willing to, you know, look at places outside their hometowns. And so we need to look at, what are the comparables? Who are we trying to attract when we're trying to attract talent? So, you know, we can, we can certainly point to even people on this call where they came from outside the area. So we want to make sure that it's not that we're just competitive within this region. We want to make sure that we're trying, when we are looking for talent, that we're drawing talent from outside the region too. So we got to come up with this list of comparables. And the board needs to, along with staff, we need to agree on what that list of comparables is and adopt that as policy and say, these are who we're comparing to. And then, then we need to review the compensation class. So this is looking at, you know, I tried to simplify the argument here, but we have a very broad pay band with very few job descriptions compared to a really narrow pay band with a lot of job descriptions. There's pros and cons to both, but we need to take a close look at that and, you know, reevaluate, do we want to stick with our current band of the way things are structured? Or do we want to, do we want to go to something that's a more narrow band? The benefit of a narrow band is it provides more opportunity for increasing your, you know, going up inside the existing organization. So let me give you an example. I'm going to stick with the water operator example, but there's many examples. So if we have, we currently have a water operator, you know, position. But if you had a water operator one, water operator two, three, four, that's, if that is the model we adopt, right? Well, water operator one would have a certain level of certification required. Two would have a higher level. Three has a higher level. Four has a higher level. So you're, you're creating an incentive for an employee than to get additional certifications to climb up in those grades and steps, which, which a lot of places do. So I'm just giving you a contrast there, but we have to, we have to work on that. And then we have to review the pay structure, including the compensation formula. We're going to be talking more about this later tonight. But the, you know, really understanding, you know, merit versus COLA. And I would argue what we have today, we've blended these two. It's not to say it's wrong. It's just very different than what you typically see. And it comes with its own set of complications, and we're going to, we'll be talking about that later tonight. And then ultimately, when the, as we work through all this process, we got to be working with our staff. This can't be done in a vacuum, right? This isn't something you have the consultant go do and you come back with results and, and then tell the staff, okay, here's how you're impacted. That is a, I've seen that done. It's a really poor way to do a compensation study. This is something that you have to work with staff through the process. And, and you got to, you got to develop the buy-in with staff and you got to maintain it as you go through. We've, I'll talk more about that here in a minute, but we've been working on that already. So you, you have to have the staff participation. If you don't have the staff participation and engagement on this, you, you end up with something that's not, not a good result typically. And then at the end, we got to develop an implementation strategy. The first part of all this work gives us data. It gives us information. The second part is figuring out how are we implementing this? You know, we, we, we got to, we got to be smart about implementing this, whatever, whatever the findings are. We got to, we got to be smart about it. So, you know, I've broken out that, that's all the work that the staff will be doing. Certainly, we're going to be asking the board to weigh in on some policy decisions in all of this. One being, which we're going to talk about later tonight, is the COLA. And, and, you know, is there, do, is there a limit? Do we want limits? What, what, you know, those kinds of things? Tonight is not the formal process that we're going to be going through in terms of the comp study, but it's the beginning of a conversation around it. The board needs to weigh in on the comparable entities. The board needs to agree that whatever we're comparing to, that there's agreement there, that the board feels like, yeah, those, those, those are entities we should be comparing to. And then ultimately, I really think the board needs to develop a policy that defines the frequency of future comp studies so that that's embedded in, in the policies. So that, I would argue, I think, you know, a comp study like this should be done at least every five years. It, that way, job descriptions don't start to diverge from the actual job. You, you, you keep those in line with each other, and it's not as heavy of a lift if you do it every few years. So what have we done? So the process, we've worked with staff to develop an understanding and need for the comp study. So we've had a lot of conversations with staff about this because this isn't something you want to, again, I, I will argue that this is part of my philosophy, that you, you don't just simply go tell staff this is happening to you. I, I don't, I just think that's not responsible. So we, we have spent a lot of time engaging with staff, having conversations with staff, getting them to understand the need. As part of that, we developed talking points, working with staff, and that we've provided those talking points to all staff. You know, why are we doing this? What's the goal? You know, how do they get to weigh in? What's that all look like? So we, we have done those things. We are currently developing the RFP for services. I'm hoping if we're going to have them onboard by the end of May, obviously, we need to get this on the street at some point in April. So that's the goal, is to get the RFP on the street at some point in April. I'm, I'm hoping for mid-April. And then we got to begin work with the consultant by the end of May. The timeframe for this work, it's quite a bit, it's a heavy lift. You're talking about somewhere in the neighborhood of nine to 12 months. Could it be sooner? Maybe. But I, I look at staff's own workload that we already have, and this requires staff's participation. So I think trying to push it faster is really putting pressure on our own staff more than it is the consultant. Again, this, this is some, this is work you do in conjunction with the consultant. You don't do it alone. So that's to tell you that, that's where we're at in, in the comp stage. So we're, we're at the beginning of this. This is, this is, this has really been already, the conversations we've had with staff have been great, frankly. I think staff understands the need for this at this point. They, they, they get it. And they, they, they get the rationale of why this has to be done and the timing of it. And they also acknowledge it's, it's a pain. This is typically, you know, this isn't, this isn't fun work. This isn't, and frankly, anytime you do a class comp study, you'll hear many HR people tell you, well, everybody thinks they're getting a pay raise when you do a class comp study. You know, that's part of what we want to make sure is that there's clear expectations here, that there's no, we're not telling everybody this is going to result in something magnificent. We, we don't know. We haven't done this in a long time. So this has to get done. And so that's where we're at. I hope Commissioner Doan, this, this provides some, some level of satisfaction of where we're at in the process and where we're going. And I, and I open the door to any questions you have on this. Commissioner Doan, go ahead.
Tom, this is Jim Doan. What do you think this study is going to cost?
I'm trying to remember what we've budgeted for this, and I'm going to call, ask Paul to weigh in. But I, I, it's, I'm going to say in the neighborhood of about $200,000.
Okay.
That's, but I don't know, I don't remember exactly what we budgeted.
All right. Earlier, you said you used the pronoun "he" for the consultant, and I assume that that was inadvertent.
It was. I apologize.
Okay.
Yeah.
Well, I look forward to getting on with this.
So do I. I, I, I do want to point out if I, if I can. I mean, obviously, we've had some changes in turnover in HR. And that threw a bit of a wrinkle in all of this. You know, in terms of, of the timing on this, right now, Paul and myself are the main owners of this work. And we're, we're, we're trying to get it to align a bit with the mission, vision, and values work that we're also doing. We do have, our new HR analyst has started. And she's joined the team. She's working with Catherine Cruz. We have the next HR person will be starting here end of May, I believe, or beginning of June. And at some point, we'll, we'll have them in front of the board so they can meet you, but, and you can meet them. But I, one of the things that I didn't want to do is tell brand-new HR people, first day on the job, oh, here, go get this done. Let me know when you got it done. So this was something that I would prefer to have HR have ownership over completely. But with turnover that we've had, this is something that I'm going to be owning, and I will slowly be bringing HR in on this as we go through it. But they're involved, but I'm not asking them to do all the heavy lift at this point. All right. Any other questions?
Thank you, Tom. This is Jim Doan.
All right. All right. Well, let's move on then. So I'm going to turn this over to Paul Matthews and our chief financial officer, and he's going to present the safety minute. And, you know, I, I'll just start his safety minute out by saying, I had a very scary close call early Monday morning. And so this daylight savings time thing is very real. So, so Paul, take it away.
All right. Thank you, Tom. Yeah. So in the spirit of being just a little bit late, which is what daylight savings time change in spring tends to have me do, I thought I'd present this as, as our safety minute a few days after the change. So as, as you probably realized, on Sunday morning, we went from, from standard time to daylight savings time here in Oregon. And interestingly enough, I didn't notice it because all of my devices reset their, their clocks themselves with one exception, and that would be my body's clock. And just like every human being and probably other animals, I didn't research that. I just look at the homo sapiens. We have something called the circadian rhythms, which I'm sure you're all aware of, which is oriented around our sleep, but also affects things like our digestive system, heart functions. A lot of those things are tied into this rhythm that is part of our body's clock. And part of the problem when we switch to daylight savings times, it alters that rhythm. And it can affect our physical well-being. It can affect our mental outlook, and it can affect our behavior. So for example, there are more car accidents on the Sunday, Sunday, Monday morning after the daylight savings time switches because our bodies aren't ready for it, and we get up an hour earlier and, and we tend to be a little bit grumpier. In the fall, some of us react maybe a little bit differently because we get a little bit more sleep. But there are a couple of things that we can do. In fact, five things I found in an article at EverydayHealth.com suggesting that we can do to help us with that transition is move from standard time to daylight savings time. First one is consistency. And that is, before you get into the time where you are switching, get your sleep regular, have a regular sleep schedule, and that will reduce the impact on your body than moving to daylight savings time will be. My, my doctor calls a good sleep hygiene. I'm horrible at it. But having good, consistent sleep schedule will help you. And then start gradually shifting your sleep before, the week before daylight saving time switch. Well, that would require me to know that it was happening this Sunday. But had I known that, and if I had the discipline and good sleep hygiene, I could have started 15 minutes per day beforehand, just gradually shifting my sleep as we approached that Sunday morning when we are changing over. The other thing they recommend is actually changing your dinner schedule because that all sets up part of our circadian rhythm. And so adjust that 15 minutes per day so you can get that major part of your life in order. That then helps you with the good sleep hygiene, and it helps you shift your sleeping schedule as well. They also suggest that you switch all of your clocks. And this was the interesting thing. This was the first time I woke up, went to church, everything happened normally on Sunday morning. I didn't realize until I got home. My wife said, you know, daylight savings time had switched because literally every device in our house now that I look at regularly, from my phone, my watch, my, my clock radio and my car and our computers, they all switch automatically. So, but if you have those old devices that need to be switched, consider switching those devices the night before and get you kind of thinking about what's, what's coming. And then the last item is to start your day with sunlight. There's something about sunlight, getting yourself exposed to sunlight early in the morning. It helps the body readjust to those rhythms. So that is it for the safety moment. And again, it's important to make these shifts so you don't end up in that perilous situation that Tom was describing where, I think, Tom, if I'm not mistaken, you may have fallen asleep as you were driving or something along, no, a driver coming at you had fallen asleep. That's right. I got that backwards. But with that, I'm going to switch into the department report. There are no questions or comments on daylight savings time.
Paul, this is Dick.
Yes.
We live in Old Amity Valley. What sunshine?
You know, when I moved to color, I'm sorry, Commissioner Doan.
This is, yeah. The Senate voted yesterday to go to daylight savings time all year round. It doesn't appear likely that the House will go along with it, but, you know, who knows? I certainly would encourage it. But there's all kinds of reasons when we tried it in the mid-'70s that it sort of blew apart. But I think that was mostly hatred of Richard Nixon. So anyway, I'll just be quiet now.
Yeah, I, this is Dick. I agree. Staying on daylight savings time would be just fine with me.
Okay, so for my department report, this is going to be a short report. Some may say I mailed it in because I've been working a lot of other things right now. But I wanted to highlight some of the things, the challenges that the finance department's faced during this era of COVID-19. And then I want to touch on a personal note that I have. And so first of all, I could not be more proud of, of our team. You know, we showed up on a Monday morning back, I think it was March 16th of 2020, and we told everybody to go home, figure out how they were going to pay all the bills, pay all of our employees, do our financial reporting and, and essentially do the district's financial business remotely as we were all trying to understand how to deal with the COVID-19 virus. And, and they did it, and they found ways to do their jobs that were very interesting, a very, you know, they, they just simply got the work done. It would have been very easy for people to have said, well, I can't do this because I don't have this or the other thing. Instead, they came up with ways to accomplish the mission. And so just kudos to them, their professionalism. And I think we saw that throughout the district. It's not unique to the finance department. But they're the group that I get to brag about, so, so that's why I'm doing that. And again, I couldn't be, couldn't be more, more proud. But one of the challenges that we saw is we've had new positions come up and we've had retirements and so forth, is actually the challenge of onboarding staff when you have a COVID-19, you're working remotely. And we immediately recognized the onboarding staff as being a, a real challenge. And so we were very deliberate about that. Supervisors worked incredibly closely. We planned well in advance of retirements and had overlaps and did everything we could to document workflow because we knew that the natural sort of team that would be around them was going to be dispersed. And so we took a very deliberate approach. And of course, onboarding should always be a deliberate approach. I'm not saying that during non-COVID times it isn't. We've always taken a deliberate approach, but I'm just saying in this case, it was more than normal. And, and in fact, we have successfully onboarded our employees. Having said that, one of the other things that we wanted to do is to keep that team building effort that brings people together, the human side of, of our team. And building that team happens naturally when you're all in the same building together. You have lunch together. You go on walks together. You see each other in the hallway. And that's an important part of people feeling that they belong within the organization is to have that camaraderie. And so we were trying to find ways of doing that. And so in our, our department meetings, we purposely developed, And so we were trying to find ways of doing that. And so in our, our department meetings, we purposely developed what you might call icebreakers. And we've done three of them over the course of, of the pandemic. The first one was just something interesting about you. So we went around everybody within our group. Each, we would meet each week and they would, they would give a report out on something interesting about that was kind of interesting fun. So I reported that when I was a senior in high school, I had curly hair, a full head of hair, naturally curly hair, things of that nature that people wouldn't necessarily know. And then the next thing we did is we played a game called Two Lies and a Truth. It didn't take a lot of time to do these things either. So I wanted to give you the impression we waste a lot of time at work playing games. But it was important to bring the team together. And so the way the two lies and truth worked is we each thought up two lies and then one thing that was truthful. And we put that into a random generator. And then each of our department meetings, we would go out and we'd say, here, here are the, these three facts. And the game was then to identify who it was and which was true and which ones were false. And it was a lot of fun. And I think it contributed to that camaraderie. And then the last thing that we're doing now and we're wrapping that up is we didn't know what it was called. It was, it's called Pichakucha. I think I'm saying that correctly. It's a Japanese word, as I understand. I don't speak Japanese. I barely speak English, but it's, uh, means chit chat in Japanese. And we were doing this and we just asked everybody to come up with a slide deck and talk about what they do that's an important thing about them. And it varies in lengths. We usually spend about actually 10 minutes. Investing 10 minutes of our, our time with our colleagues to learn about them. And some of them have just been fascinating things that we've learned. And insight, they get to tell people the kinds of things that they might hear around the, the water cooler or, or the coffee machine, whatever it is that you, that your pleasure is. And so I, I went to the Oregon Government Finance Officer Association Conference. It's the first live conference I've been in since the pandemic hit. And the keynote speaker talked about this Pichakucha. And I thought, wow, we're brilliant people. We came up with this all by ourselves. Here we are, we're doing this thing. And we didn't know how advanced we were. And I came back and bragged to one of our staff members, Kristi, and she said, yeah. Where do you think I got the idea? She'd gone to a conference on procurement and the same speaker had been there. So I feel a little deflated, but it really did work. It was a great idea. And actually, Kristi has been such an important part of, of helping us do these, this team building exercise. She has a strong interest in a, and, and a great sense of those things. But that's what we've done to keep the team built together. We really do need to get back together and we've got a plan to do that. But those are the three things that we did. And the other thing that we did frankly is, is throughout the pandemic is we really emphasized that we needed to have an ethic of respect for each other. We have a lot of folks that have different views on matters related to the pandemic. That's how our, our diverse society works. That's not a bad thing. It's a good thing. We appreciate all the different views that people have. But we have to do that in a respectful way. And we emphasize that to try to minimize any kind of conflict around those things, especially you probably remember there was a time when this was much more controversial. And we always came back to that North Star that we're going to respect each other, we're going to allow for differences. And, and, and we put our common, our, our common interest in promoting the district's financial health, that always kind of rose above that. So that was one thing. And the other thing we did is we celebrate each other. And that was part of these three things that we've, that we've done. But we also took time just to, to honor each other and, and, and to go out of our way to understand that that's an important part of people belonging to, to the organization. And along that front, I've, I've got one more thing I want to talk about here. And it's, it, this is not a, you know, this is one of those mixed emotional things. One of our coworkers who, who retired back in 2019, she was killed earlier this year in a traffic accident. And so we, we want to honor her. And I, I just want to take a little bit of time here tonight to talk about Renee Ogletree. She was an accounting technician here at the district. She worked at the district for 11 years. During that 11 year period of time, she paid over 50,000 invoices for more than $400 million. And she was about five foot nothing in height and she was one of the more sarcastic people that you could meet. She was a wonderful person who could break the ice when we were in meetings. She was that, that spark plug that would allow us to emerge past whatever we thought was important when in fact the human relationships are actually in the end, the things that we cherish the most. So I have three pictures here of Renee and a few weeks back in the Thursday memo, I included a, the paycheck news article that we, that we put together to celebrate Renee and, and how important she was to our organization and to some of the folks who worked with her and how we are, we're happy that we knew Renee and that she was part of our team and she was part of our lives, but losing somebody like Renee at 69 is, is really painful for us. So with that, that concludes my department report. I just wanted to celebrate Renee as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Paul. The next item will be our commissioner communications and the reports of meetings attended. We'll begin this evening with surprise, surprise. Commissioner Bagnell.
It's really cool to be right at the front of the alphabet. So I don't have too many things to report on. The first is that on the first of March, we had a board work session where Roy Rogers from the Washington County Commission visited us. And we got our update on the Willamette Water Supply System. And we also talked at great length about flags and flagpoles. On the 10th, I had a meeting with our CFO, our CEO and Commissioner Duggan to do a finance committee meeting where we talked about the COLA and the inflation and how it is affecting rates and raises as well. And then of course, tonight's meeting, the regular board meeting. And that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Bagnell. Commissioner Dome?
Yes, thank you. On the first, I attended the same work session that most people did. On the 10th, you and Tom, we had a meeting just to, to discuss where we go from here with masking updates and then tonight's regular meeting.
Indeed. Thank you, Commissioner Dome. Commissioner Duggan?
For this month, on the day after our last regular meeting, there was a special meeting of the Willamette Water Supply System Board. It was on February 17th, where we approved the water treatment plant guaranteed maximum price contract. On the first, I also attended the, the board work session where we met with Commissioner Roy Rogers, got an update on the WWSS and the flagpole. On the third, I attended the regular board meeting of the WWSS. On the eighth, I had a meeting with CEO Tom Hickman and our President Sanders to plan for tonight's meeting. On the 10th, there was the meeting of the, the finance committee that Commissioner Bagnell mentioned, and then tonight's meeting. So that's my report for March.
Thank you, Commissioner Duggan. And it looks like a freshly shaved Commissioner Schmidt. Is the beard is gone. Did we lose Dick?
The beard is gone, but the mute is off.
But the mute is on. Dick, you need to do your thing. It's a really, really quiet report.
I show his.
You need to unmute.
His microphone's off.
Yeah.
I, I'm sorry. Are you addressing me? And I, I had to step away for a moment, so.
No, we are, we're waiting for Commissioner Schmidt. He does show up as a guest on our list. But he was having some audio problems earlier before the meeting. And I wonder if that, if the gremlins haven't returned.
And unfortunately, team settings are such that we are not allowed to unmute other people.
Mm hmm. Yeah. Because he was, he was on video just a couple of minutes ago and, and he's no longer on video either. So I wonder if some of the computer issues he was having just before the meeting.
He's still on video and connected. I suspect it's just a unmute button location issue.
Alrighty.
He has also submitted his form to me. So if you, if you needed to run quickly through what he sent out, I could go ahead and do that for him.
Do you want to send him a quick note and see if he's able to get his audio working or if he wants Debbie to read it?
I saw your note, Tim. I will text that to him.
Yeah.
Yes, there's, there's two instances of. Let's do this. Commissioner Schmidt, try, try speaking now.
Hello?
You're in the meeting twice. Debbie, can you remove one of the, the muted version of Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Okay, now does it work?
Yes.
Yes. Okay. Finally.
Dick, do you have any meetings to report?
Yes, I have two. I have the work session on the first of the month and tonight. And that's it for me.
All right. Thank you, Commissioner Schmidt. I am the last member here to this evening. And so I will report on February 28th. I met with our lobbyist Norm Eater and Tom Hickman. And we went over the outcomes of the lobbying effort that was made earlier this winter down in Salem. And then I met on the first with Tom to discuss some of the future goal planning for the district. The eighth meeting, which is, was our board agenda meeting with myself and Commissioner Duggan and CEO Tom Hickman. And then on the 10th, the meeting that Commissioner Dome had mentioned where we would met with a couple of the members of the leadership team and talked about the COVID plan update. Also on the 10th, there was a very short JWC Executive Committee meeting, which ended up not really happening because they didn't have quorum. And then tonight's meeting. So that would be it for me. Alrighty, next item then are topics to be raised by the commissioners. And I will ask, do we have any topics to be raised by the commissioners? Not hearing any. The next item will be our public comment. Where public comment time is set aside for persons wishing to address the board on items that the consent agenda and matters not on the agenda. Additional public comment will be invited on agenda items as they are presented. Do we have any persons who would like to comment this evening? Okay. Not hearing any. Then I will move on to our next agenda item, which is our consent agenda. The consent agenda items are considered to be routine and may be enacted in one motion without separate discussion. Any board members may request that an item be removed by motion for discussion and separate action. Any items requested to be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion will be considered immediately after the board has approved those items which do not require discussion. This evening, we are looking to approve via consent agenda the February 16th, 2022 regular meeting minutes. And to approve the March 1st, 2022 work session minutes. And also to adopt resolution 03-22, a resolution endorsing the annexation of the Tuolleton Valley Water District of a single property. Let me read that over again, please. We're going to adopt resolution 03-22, a resolution endorsing the annexation to the Tuolleton Valley Water District of a single property located at Tax Lot 400, Township 1, North Range 2 West, Section 14 of the Willamette Meridian at 21727 Northwest West Union Road in Washington County. Do I have a motion and a second to, to approve the consent agenda as presented?
This is Commissioner Duggan. So moved.
And this is Commissioner Bagnell. I second.
Thank you. I'd like to ask our district recorder to please provide a roll call.
Commissioner Bagnell?
Yes.
Commissioner Dome?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Fantastic. The motion passes. Next item on our agendas this evening is the business agenda. Where we will be considering adopting resolution 04-22, a resolution amending the intergovernmental agreement between Washington County and the Tuolleton Valley Water District for construction of waterline work on Southwest Tuolleton Valley Highway at Southwest 211th to Southwest 209th Avenues and Southwest 209th Avenue, Southwest Alexander to Southwest Kinnaman Road. For this, we'll have a staff report by Nick Augustus. Nick?
Thank you. Good evening, President Sanders, members of the board. It's my pleasure to present this IGA amendment. You might recognize it. We actually presented on it last year around this time. And several things have changed since then, and which is why we wanted to bring it to the board at this time. Let's see. All right. Did that advance it? This line?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, great. All right. So the Washington County. Um, alright, so the Washington County, uh, IGA scope extends. I just wanted to go over those again with a little map here. Um, that extends on, uh, Tuolton Valley Highway, uh, from 209th Avenue to 211th Avenue. And then, uh, north-south direction, there's a lot of work that will be done from, uh, Southwest Alexander Street to Southwest Kinnaman Road. Um, a lot of this, uh, the, the intersection right there, if, if you've been in the area, the railroad tracks are right there near the intersection, and, and so the, one of the priorities for the county is to raise the intersection to meet the grade of those tracks. And so, uh, we, uh, would like to take the opportunity to, uh, replace some pipes that otherwise would be very deep following, uh, the construction there. Uh, we, we have some old piping in the area and, and, um, the condition on it is not great. Uh, so some of the details of, of the IGA amendment include, um, the, the county's desire to construct roadway improvements, uh, raising the grade significantly. Uh, we do have, uh, several different water lines that, that will be impacted by this work. And we've performed some, uh, condition assessment of the pipelines, and would like to replace those at this time. Uh, it's a lot easier when the county has all the traffic controls set up and, and we're able to do, uh, enter the roadway at the same time and, and have those improvements done. Um, and then, uh, one big change, uh, since the last time we presented is we have additional conflicts, uh, with piping, uh, the, the conflict with the county's, uh, storm water design along, uh, Southwest 209th Avenue. And these conflicts is, is much as we've, we've tried to avoid them, or unfortunately, we're, we're not able to avoid all of them. So we do have some, uh, uh, portion of our 30-inch pipeline that will need to be relocated as well as, uh, several hundred feet of 12-inch pipeline. And, uh, due to these changes, the cost of the project has exceeded the value of the original IGA, and which is, uh, main reason why we wanted to, to bring this back to your attention. A couple of details regarding the cost of, of the IGA. Uh, the, the original IGA cost was 856,000 plus some proportional lump sum items. And, uh, currently, we're estimating the total project cost at $2,018,208. Um, give or take a little bit. The, the total spend date is 52,500. And the total IGA that, that was, uh, signed by the county is 1,673,000. And that includes the design work. Uh, since that time, the bids were actually received on the IGA, or on, on this work, and the, the cost of that IGA is actually 1,874,000. Uh, so it went up a little bit. Um, this is being funded through Fund 11, uh, which is our, uh, capital improvements fund and under the line item pipeline upgrades and renewables agency-driven. And with this, there, there's been, uh, some shifting around of, of the county projects. They've had, a couple of them have been delayed. Um, and because of, because of those delays, uh, we don't anticipate a need to increase, uh, our biennial budget at this time. We believe we'll be able to manage within that line item, uh, still, just due to the, the, the county workflow, and, and there are several projects they're waiting on, on, uh, right-of-way acquisitions that, that will push the expenditures into the next biennium. And with that, are there any questions?
I just wanted to add one more comment to, um, this agenda item, and that is, um, there are, uh, you know, Nick did a super job of explaining all of the changes that have occurred, but one of the things that, um, I think we need to be cognizant of is these county-driven projects will continue to happen. And the cost improve, uh, it cost increases that we're experiencing, um, is gonna, again, continue to happen. And unfortunately, um, even though Nick is super good-looking, he is not able to, um, get the county to stick with their original budget. So we just want you to be aware that when, um, these changes happen, we'd like for you to be aware of them and, um, know that, you know, we don't really have a lot of choice, but the cost increases are happening for a lot of various reasons. And he does look very nice. Good job, Nick.
Thanks.
Oh, yeah, if anybody who has driven down that road knows of that hump right there at the tracks and, um, can envision that being a complicated little corner, because you also have TV Highway has like this little steep little slope right there. So like 100 yards long, but it gets steep to join in there with Kinnaman, or not Kinnaman, um, 209th, and then it flattens out again. Um, and that also, that, in that road, isn't that the, I guess, the eastern boundary of what is now the new South Hillsboro area?
Yes, yep.
So I would imagine that it became a lot more complex than it used to be, so. Some fortunate, uh, reality of another million dollars. Um, maybe that, is that why the suit is on? Cause you were bringing us, uh, the news?
Yeah, yeah. Make, make sure you, you knew it was a pricey endeavor.
Indeed. Alright, well, thank you, Nick. Um, if there are no other questions, uh, do we have a motion and a second to adopt approving amendment number one to the intergovernmental agreement between Washington County and the Tuolton Valley Water District? Um, for the construction work on waterline, for the construction of waterline work on South TV Highway and 209th Avenue. This would be the Resolution 04-22.
This is Commissioner Bagnall, I so moved.
This is Commissioner Don, I, uh, second.
Can the district recorder please provide a roll call vote?
Commissioner Bagnall?
Yeah.
Commissioner Don?
Yes.
Commissioner Duggan?
Yes.
Commissioner Sanders?
Yes.
Commissioner Schmidt?
Yes.
Alright, the motion passes. We used to drive through that intersection all the time for our kids to play soccer at the school there on 209th. So I remember hating that intersection. Anyway, the motion does pass, and, um, our next item is to consider providing staff with direction for flags to be displayed at the district headquarters. And, um, this evening's presentation will be provided by Carrie Pack.
Good evening, Commissioners. Um, thank you for having me back. I told you you couldn't get rid of me that quickly. Um, actually, Matt Oglesby is on his way down to Cancun for a well-deserved vacation, so I, um, decided to step in, and I realized that I didn't do a whole lot of present preparation for this, other than to remind you that we came to the board, um, on March, in March 1st. And as you, a couple of you have already noted, um, we had a very robust discussion about this issue. And one of the, um, outcome of that robust discussion was, um, Commissioner Duggan's suggestion of why not keep the, one of the existing, um, pole and, uh, arrange the, the, um, flags in a way with three poles. And so that is exactly what we did. We thought that was a great suggestion. And we did a, um, um, rendering of what that could look like. And thanks to Commissioner Don, who's, um, who pointed out that we had the order of flags, um, flying at a, in the wrong order, um, from the previous presentation that you may have seen, the slide that you may have seen. So what we're, what you're looking at right now is, um, three flags, three required flags that are flying, um, with the two new poles that will be, um, matching the height at the top of the existing pole that actually already sits on a concrete pedestal. So the two new poles will be a little bit taller in length, but at the end of the day, they will all be, um, even at the top of the flagpole. So they won't look odd, you know, in the differential in the, in the height of them. And, um, so with these arrange, the arrangement that we have, that we're showing here on this slide, it gives us the ability to, um, fly all of the required flags, um, by the state. It also gives us other opportunities, as you can see, because the, uh, flags, the two new poles will be taller. We have additional opportunities to fly different flags, if that's what the board wanted to do. And what we wanted to talk about today is, um, um, your desire or your pleasure to either fly these three flags or whether additional flags. And if it's the latter, um, what process would you like to, to have in terms of selecting which flags, um, the additional ones should be and could be? So with that, I'm, um, requesting, um, some direction with, um, with, from you as to how you would like to proceed. Right now, if you drive at the front door, um, the greenery that you see in the new, two new flag area has all been, um, prepped with, um, uh, ready for the flags to be placed. And that work was done last week by our own staff, and they, you know, they do awesome job. I, I can't throw anything at them that they can't do. So this was, they encountered a couple of really big, um, tree trunks, and they were able to, um, address, prep the site so that it's ready for flags, so. Commissioner Don, you have a question?
Yeah, just an observation. My understanding is that the US flag has to be conspicuously taller than the other flags.
Ah.
Uh, and, uh, we just need to do that. And if they don't give you a, a percentage, it's just conspicuously taller. I, uh, went through that with, uh, in basic training. Uh, it's one of those things that is putting to my body.
Yeah.
So it has conspicuously.
We'll work with the, with the, um, architects that are helping us out, um, to make sure that we meet all of the standards for, um, flying flags appropriately.
And when we first discussed this, there was, I believe, a preference from at least two of the board members that we fly the rainbow flag. And, uh, I would like to, what? Make that motion or, uh, something, uh. Although I, quite frankly, with three flagpoles, I don't know exactly where you do it. Uh, but, uh, anyway, uh, I'd like consideration to be given to flying the, uh, the rainbow flag.
Thank you, Commissioner Don. Uh, you do bring up a point that was made, uh, about 11 months ago, maybe 10 months ago. Um, can we get some feedback from the other board members on, uh, any flags that they would like to see? If they have any opinions or, um, positions they'd like to take?
I would like to see TVWD remember our mission, our sole mission as a water district and to not take up causes that are outside of that mission. I would prefer not to fly other flags other than the United States of America flag, and of course, the POW MIA flag.
Yeah, this is Dick, uh, I agree with that, uh, I, I, I would, regardless of, of the rainbow flags connotation, uh, it's not approved or required by the state, so I don't know if I want to fly it or not.
Thank you. Commissioner Duggan?
Uh, my feeling on the matter is I, I would like to get more input, uh, from the people that are going to be showing up and working at this building on what sort of flags would be appropriate. Um, I was thinking about that, uh, yesterday evening when I saw that Elmer's flag and banner in Portland is getting a run on Ukrainian flags. And, uh, given the, the state of the world right now, I would, um, want to have a Ukrainian flag, um, on our mast, uh, to show solidarity with the people of Ukraine that are experiencing such, uh, horrendous atrocities against them. Um, but I, I would like to have a, a, a committee of employees, um, put up, uh, suggested, uh, banners that, um, are nationally recognized and communicate, uh, positive, uh, messages. I, I know that other organizations have, have had flags, um, uh, banners put up. Uh, the city of Beaverton has had a number of temporary and permanent flags go up. Um, but I, I think this is a decision, uh, for the board with a lot more input than just us thinking about it a couple nights. Um, I'm really glad that the, the three flag, uh, proposal i- is workable. Um, the, the architect in me is pleased with that picture. And I, I'm glad that, uh, staff was able to, to find a way to make it work. And I think with the three required flags, um, being on, on separate poles, it ma- makes a lot of sense. Um, a- and, and I, I think I, I remember in my former handbook training about the, uh, flag etiquette, that, yeah, the, the, the middle pole with the United States flag has to be either higher or to the left. But, uh, either here or there, I, I would like to have more input before we decide, uh, what banners go on these flags. Um, and I, I think we have time before June for, uh, Pride Month to, uh, get, uh, a rainbow flag, um, if, if that's what the, the board so desires. But I think we also need to have input for, um, a- any other, uh, banners that, that, uh, uh, might be appropriate for, uh, uh, various nationally, uh, recognized, uh, causes. So, um, I, I just think we need, need to make sure that, uh, um, we're, we're following the, the etiquette a- as it relates to, uh, flying the banners and, and make sure that we don't, uh, get crosswise, like I said, with, uh, good practice. So that's my feeling. I, I think we need more input before we decide, um, a- anything beyond this.
Okay. Thank you, uh, Commissioner Duggan. Um, if I may call in our CEO, Tom Hickman. Um, Tom, what has been proposed is perhaps having input from your staff, um, all members of the staff? Is that something that, uh, you could facilitate, would be interested in facilitating? Or would you prefer this, uh, be a decision made purely by the board?
So, uh, and I see Carrie's got her hand up and, and.
I'm sorry, I, I don't.
So I, I, I don't, I want to be respectful and, and let her jump in here before I, I say something that she's gonna want to.
Well, I'm just a consultant, so you can say whatever you want to me, but, uh, I was gonna make a suggestion. Um, we have, you know, as you know, um, the district is embarking on the missions, visions, and values, um, project. And there's gonna be, um, a concerted effort in, um, with, with that work in terms of, um, staff involvement. Um, I need to let my dog out of my office. I am very sorry, just one very.
Well, I, I can, I can pick up for you, cause that, that's where I was gonna go, is, um, so, we, we, and, and in fact, had interviews today, making our final decision tomorrow on, uh, who we're going to work with, um, for our mission, vision, and values work, which will include, uh, working with the board. And what I would suggest is maybe we use that process to, um, you know, let's look at our mission, let's look at our vision, and, and see what, maybe what this can get answered in that venue. Um, you know, I will tell you as, as staff, um, you know, th- this is one of those things that I, I'll, I'll. you know, this is one of those things that I I'll I'll just tell you my I I'll say from my perspective, it it can be a bit of a slippery slope. I I worry a little bit because, you know, different boards in the future can have a different set of values. And I worry about what choices they could make for what they would want to fly. And that would be different from what is illustrated in this in this graphic here. So that that's, you know, my my concern is that, you know, we could end up in the future if we don't have really tight rules around this. You know, I worry about how how do future boards make future decisions on this after we're gone? So I guess maybe what I would encourage is through the work that we're going to do on the mission, vision and values, if this is something that we want to do, maybe what we do is craft together. We work together to craft policy on on the process of requesting a different flag or or we we set some sort of guidance and boundaries on that so that we can we can then have something that guides us here better rather than just at this point picking any one particular flag that that this this board is in agreement on. Because I I the other piece of this too is, so how long do we fly this flag, right? I mean, is it is it year round? Is it, you know, there's there's a lot of questions and there's other flags too. And even the Ukrainian flag, if we wanted to show show solidarity, you know, how long do we do that? So there's those kinds of things that I think we should probably think through really carefully. And I think the proper place to do that is as we work through the mission, vision and value work. That's what I would suggest at this point in time.
Yeah, and and Tom and I didn't rehearse that, but we were apparently on the same wavelength. And and what I would suggest is that, you know, you can use the work that we're doing right now or will be doing to kind of get the process started. And we can come back to the board at a work session, kind of talk about, you know, here are some process based on feedback from staff that we're recommending or options, you know, for how to express our values as a district in in form of flags. And so I I think there is an option. I think the having three flagpoles does make it pretty eloquent for three required flags. So, you know, that's like number one box to check. And I think we can immediately meet that that accomplish that objective. And then we can continue to work during the next year or so with this work that Tom and and others are embarking on to bring about some other additional values that the district and staff would want to display out in public. So that's what I would recommend.
Well, thank you to both of you. That's those are good points to be made. I I'll say this, I haven't spoken in yet. First of all, as I did say last week, flags elicit a lot of emotion. They really do. They they symbolize a lot of different things to a lot to a lot of different people. And we do need to be careful of that. I want to respect Commissioner Bagnell's comment in the chat, which was this is a water district, not a political platform. My only response to that is I did not intend to any way make support for the LGBT community to be a political platform. But then again, you know, I live in my own personal bubble, which may not carry all of the opinions of of the all of the community. So I apologize if my recommendation was deemed to be political. It wasn't intended to be. My only concern with putting this in with the staff is creating division or derision within the staff if there is a preference one way or the other, or it it reveals schism or disagreement within the organization, in which case that's why I wanted or I considered making this a board level decision to avoid to avoid that aspect. But maybe, I don't know. Tom, please.
Yeah.
Help me out here.
So, you know, I you can see I'm I'm I I'm doing probably the best I can to to avoid having staff weigh in on this. And in part is because we do have staff that my guess is they would make different choices or they would make a different request or at least an additional request, right? And I can think of two or three other flags that they would request. And we start drilling deep down into political views at that point. And so I I worry about that division. And so I am really trying to keep staff out of this discussion and would really like to keep staff out of this discussion for that very reason. I I don't think it's going to benefit the board to have staff start coming to the board and saying, well, I would like this particular flag flown or this particular flag flown and and even members of the public. And I think we start to open that door. But if so, what I'm really asking is let the I'm like, the board gets to make a a decision here certainly. And we will follow the board direction, whatever that is, we we will follow it. But I prefer that the rest of our staff beyond myself and and Carrie, I I prefer the rest of us to just let the board make this call what they think is in the board's best interest and and we will we will comply. And but I do think we should probably think about developing some guidance and rules about how the choices are made, how others could approach the board to make a different choice in the future. That that kind of thing, I think we should probably think about addressing if we're going to go down this path.
All over flags. So as you were speaking, Tom, the thought I had was to propose that we table this discussion until we can do some additional research. And then as part of that research, maybe ask for a volunteer or two from our volunteer to from our board membership to research what organizations do with regards to when decisions are made for when flags are raised or brought down off from the presentation poll. Anybody have any thoughts on any of that? That seems like a good idea for the moment.
This is Dick. I have a question. What is that black flag up there?
That's the POW MIA flag, which is required by the state of Oregon.
Okay, thank you.
And we will definitely make sure that the the American flags is, you know, flown with all of the flags are flown with appropriate etiquette, flag etiquette. I don't know what all those are, but we will make sure that they are followed. So. And, you know, I I don't know with Tom's approval, I wish we could pass notes without telling everybody. But, you know, staff can do that research that that President Sanders that you have just mentioned. I mean, we I don't necessarily think that the board has to find a volunteer to.
Yeah, no, no, we we can do the research. I just want guidance on it. That's that's what I'm asking for is just just give us guidance on what information you want us to go acquire. And and we can go get that information and bring it back to the board.
Okay. Well, then let me ask Commissioner Bagnell, Commissioner Duggan and Commissioner Don, how do you feel about tabling this motion for the moment? Asking staff to do some research on what are the standard procedures used at various organizations and government entities with regards to flying flags other than those required by state or federal law?
This is Commissioner Don. I'm in favor of that. In fact, there's aspects of this that I hadn't even thought of.
Yeah, that's coming clear, isn't it?
And I I think yes, and I think that probably the best course of action is do the three flags and then put this off for a couple of years until we've got the budget stuff done. We don't want to add fuel to the fire of people who are 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 going to be, you know, boiling tar out in the parking lot. So I think probably a low profile on this would be fine. On the other hand, a Ukrainian flag wouldn't bother me in the least.
Commissioner Bagnell, would you be okay if we tabled this for now and did some more research?
You bet. I my I have fairly strong feelings against flying any flags other than the United States flag and the POW MIA flag. We're a water district. This is not a political platform. And I don't want it to become a political platform.
Respect that.
This is this is Dick. I actually I concur completely with that. We stay out of politics completely.
Very good. And Commissioner Duggan?
It all sounds good, and I'm glad staff was able to push back on my suggestion. I raised the white flag and I think their suggestion is fantastic. So I just thought that there might be some other banners out there that might be worthy. But yeah, it is is kind of a situation where you don't want anything to be unnecessarily divisive. And that that's for sure, even though I I would love to have seen a Ukraine flag under that MIA flag because I think they represent the same kind of situations. So, thank you.
So can I get just make quick clarification? I I heard Commissioner Bagnell mention American flag and the POW MIA. And I'd like to just make sure that she was okay with the state of Oregon flag as well.
Oh, yes, obviously, of course, I'm I'm fine with that one. I just, you know, when we start getting into other flags, that's that's really troublesome for me and I I'm not there.
I, Tom, I think we have a good set of guidance and so I will just exit my presentation now.
Yep, I I think I think we got what we need and we we will move forward accordingly. So we'll we'll have we'll have the American POW, a state of Oregon POW flag flying. And we'll table any other discussion on this for for a bit. So.
Great. Thank you. All right. That then being the completion of that discussion and thank you, everybody, for being open and and communicating and talking that through. That was wonderful. Our next item up is an informational presentation. And this is an update on the district's financial strategies from Paul Matthews.
Well, good evening again, Commissioners, President Sanders. This is an update on our financial strategy. We've been talking about this for a while and we met with the Finance Committee. And we asked, we we presented options to them and we asked them for advice. They gave us another option. We have that prepared here tonight. Our goal is to go through that with you here. And then we will schedule another session at the April Work Session to present some more information. So with that, just want to get through this presentation in timely manner because I know we're we're almost out of time here. But please stop me along the way if there are questions. Really like to answer them as we go along. So our proposed agenda here is to talk about the financial strategies themselves, talk about the effect that inflation is having on our operating expenses, both on the personnel services as well as our capital operating cost. We'll give you an update on the financial forecast to go over some rate options. And then at the end, I have the financial performance of the district. I've presented that to you before. I've got it attached to the end of this presentation. If you have questions, we can go through there to the slides. Slides 53 and 54 have been updated, but they're not material in any way of the update. But to save time, I'll just see if you have any questions on that item. In terms of the financial update and the financial strategies, we've presented to you in the past quite a bit of information, including the financial risks that we saw as we prepared our various financial strategies. And in fact, some of those risks have have been realized. Chickens have come home to roost, whatever the right saying is there. But there are some key drivers that we want to talk about, you know, war, energy and the cost of energy and other supply chain issues are obviously going to have an effect on us. And the general inflationary cost increases that we saw even before the war have affected the district's financial situation. The inflationary impacts are hitting us on the purchase water. We're likely to see larger increases from both the Joint Water Commission as well as the city of Portland, pumping power, our personnel services, professional services and all the other M and S costs that we have. And we talked quite a bit already about the impact on the water supply system. Dave Krask and his team has done quite a bit of work to characterize those increases in cost. We have not had an opportunity to do that same in-depth review with the district's CIP, the in-district CIP, but we are working on that as we speak. The information that I'm presenting here is just a placeholder until we can get more analytical work done. But within the district CIP, we have impacts on our pipeline cost. You heard that just earlier from Nick Augustus, but also on our facilities and fleets. And we're looking at the work that Dave Krask's team did and we're trying to match that same concept within our CIP, which is we see less of an impact, at least for now, on the pipeline projects in terms of cost and more impact on our facilities and including things like our our vehicles and heavy equipment, the fleet. So in our financial forecast that we presented to the board and that you approved back in May of 2019, I have listed here the assumptions that we used. And you can see that we were assuming inflation on the CIP projects, both pipelines as well as other facilities, including fleet, was three and a half percent. And over the years, that actually proved to be about right. We look back and we don't hit it exactly on, but it long-term average seems about right. More often than not, it was a little lower than that, but that's what we put into our financial forecast on the ONM side. We used four and a half percent. So as we're looking and moving forward, we're saying, well, we know those numbers aren't correct. We just learned from all the work that the Water Supply Program did that those numbers aren't right. We can anticipate that they aren't right here. And we'll continue to work with our professionals in engineering group. But for now, we've put in there into our financial forecast for the next three years, four percent inflation on pipeline projects, eight percent inflation. This is each year, so it compounded over that three-year period for CIP and for ONM. We don't have really any better numbers than that. And then after that three-year period, we'll we'll assume that it goes back to our our standard inflationary estimates. We may come back to you and say that that was a poor set of assumptions and we'll need to update them. But this is what we have in the plan now. The other thing that we've done in the information about to present is we've increased the interest rate. So our prior assumption was that we would be able to borrow at about three and a half percent, which today, if we went to the market, we probably could get that for a small amount of money. But as we start to borrow additional money and as interest rates go up, by the time we're ready to borrow the money, we're looking at something that could be higher than that. And so we have in there five and a half percent. On this one item, I do want to share a bit of good news. I I think I mentioned earlier that I was at the Oregon Government Finance Officer Association meeting in Sutton River a few weeks ago or last week, I guess it was. And I was on a panel presenting information about low-interest loans. And one of my fellow panelists was the end writer that we worked with from the EPA on our WIFI loan. So I had an opportunity to talk to him and ask, could we have, could we pursue another WIFI loan to cover some of the cost increases within the water supply program? And in fact, we, we can pursue that, and we're likely to have an opportunity in May. We're expecting EPA to issue what's called a NOFA, or Notice of Funding Availability. And we will work with our partners to determine whether or not the, the district or a set of partners want to pursue that loan. So there is an opportunity for us to do that, and there are some great benefits for the district if we're able to, to do that. Now, there's nothing guaranteed about that. It's a competitive process, but we'd see where that lies. So we've talked about the WWS challenge. You've heard from Mr. Krask. You know the details there. I don't need to talk about that. But that has had a dramatic impact on our financial situation. What I'm presenting here is the overall capital improvement plan. And I want to compare really the three numbers that we have here. The gray bars that you see there, the first bars, present the, what, the CIP that we had in the financial plan that you approved back in May of 2021. The blue bars is the information that we presented to you for our January forecast. And that includes the information from the Water Supply Program itself. And then the, these red hash bars, we're using hash bars to make it stand out a little bit better for, for folks, is the information that we have now, assuming the increases in the in-district CIP that we talked about. So looking down at the bottom of the table, you can see that our total CIP through 2026 has gone up by a little bit, you know, let's say about $3 million. Not as, not a lot, and, and the reason that it is, is not a lot is because we don't have much in-district CIP. We, by design, purposefully pushed a lot of our CIP out in past 2026. And the CIP that we have here are really those projects that are, that are absolutely critical. So the, that gray bar at the bottom, that $29 million, $28 million, $22 million, there just isn't a lot of those projects really to drive our, our cost up. But we did want to include that in the forecast. So if we look at our capital financing plan, given the assumptions that we have on our ONM cost and the in-district CIP, as well as the new cost from the water supply program, this is roughly how it would roll out in terms of our funding with cash in the green. The dark bar would be our existing WIFI loan. And then the teal color, the blue there, is overall borrowing that we would have, and we're assuming from the revenue bond market. And we'll, we'll have to see if we can, in fact, get a WIFI loan for that additional amount. But there you can see the, the dollars. Now, would we borrow it in that order? Maybe not. So we are meeting with our municipal advisor and with our partners, Hillsboro and Beaverton, to discuss the opportunity, not only for WIFI loan, but also an overall strategy. It could be that we're in a better position to borrow some money now and use that to fund the program. But there are a lot of considerations there with negative arbitrage and some other things. I don't want to get into the details, but it may or may not be in the district's interest when we look at it from a strictly financial position to borrow early. But we do always want to check that assumption to make sure that we are, in fact, making the right decisions. So what impact does that have on, on our borrowing? When we brought the financial plan to the board back last May, we were planning to borrow about $408 million. And if you think about that, we have $388 from WIFI, another $20 million, and we're done. Now, with these assumptions, we're at about $611 million, which is quite a bit more than we had. So we're, we're on the hunt for a couple hundred million dollars in our plan. And in terms of our long-term debt, the bond ordinance itself that the board passed authorized us to spend up to $600 million. And we are not now at all proposing that we adjust that number. If we get to the point where we are going to borrow that, we would come to the board and ask for authorization. But when you look at a plan that has $611 million, and you look at a number of $600 million, that's just a couple of good summers of water sales that will, in fact, fill that hole. So it's, it just simply is too early to make any determination about that. And, and the good news is we don't have to make that decision right now. But I do want to present to you that that is something that we may be considering in the future. The other thing that we've talked about in the past and still is, is relevant to our discussions here this evening is the impact on our net borrowing, our net leverage, rather. And I'm not going to get into all the details here, but this is the, the financial metric that constrains the district. It's not the debt service coverage. It's our, our net leverage, which means that it's our total amount of borrowing that our, our income can support. We want to borrow more, we have to increase our income so that that ratio is in line. Our policy is to stay within eight. If we adopt something above that, I'll be coming back and we'll adjust that policy. Industry standard is, is seven. You might say, well, why would we have a policy that exceeds what you're calling the industry standard? And why would we actually have a plan that exceeds both? And the issue there is, we have a narrative. We have a story that we can tell about how we're going to bring that net leverage down with our, by getting off our, our expenses off the Portland system and so forth. And so I think that doesn't put the district's credit at risk. We also presented this information before, and you might remember the last time I showed you this chart. It said we were looking for $12 million, and we're borrowing about $200 million. Well, with all the increases that we're now including in the financial plan for the ONM cost as well as those capital items, that eats into our, our pay-go cash, the amount of money that we have to, to fund our capital expenditures on a pay-as-you-go basis. So we're now looking at about $215 million. And the other thing is, by increasing the assumed interest rate, that then means that the debt services is even higher. But the same thing applies here. If we're looking for $16 million, and the point that I made the last time you looked at this slide, we can't get that out of any one item, whether it's our material service budget, our personnel services budget, or in-district CIP. I'm not going to go through the risk of the forecast. We've gone through that together before. I think that you're well aware of those things. But just as a disclaimer, we always want to make sure that people understand these numbers. We present more decimal points than we're really rightfully should have a privilege of presenting. So take it all with a grain of salt, because these things are out of our control. They're alive, and they're out there in the real world. Some of them can cut in our favor. Some of them will cut against us, but the risks of the forecast still exist. So we've presented several options in the past. These are the four options that the status quo, which is what we had in the 2123 financial plan that you approved back in August, I'm sorry, in May. And then the three options, A, B, and C. And I'm just going to step into numbers, because we actually have a fourth, that fourth option, which is the... This is not the right slide. What happened to my? Okay, so these are the, I'm sorry for the hiccup here in my presentation. These, these are the results that we presented to you with just the WWS-only impacts. To that, we've added one more scenario. And that is, these are updated numbers with the, with the new assumptions on our operating expenses and our capital costs. As you can see, the numbers have gone up. So let me go back and show you what I'm talking about them. We had about a 15% rate increase under option A, and now we're looking at a 19% increase under option A. And then we added an option D. So let's step through these one at a time. Option A would be do nothing. Right now, the board has already approved the nine and a half percent rate increase. It would go into effect this November. No action taken. If that were the case, then we'd be looking at, if we stayed on a biennial basis, we'd be looking at two increases at about 19% in the coming two-year period. Option B would be let's take action this November. We do about a 14% rate increase this November, and then it would be 14% would be our estimate. Again, with all those risks of the forecast still out there, walking around, be another 14% over the next, next plenum. So that has smoothed out over a three-year period. Option C would be leave the existing rate increase in place for this fall, but look at doing these on an every-six-month basis. This was a recommendation that came from one of the members of your finance committee. And so we modeled that out, and so that would be about 7% rate increases every six months. And of course, we'd review these numbers each period and readjust them as we step through time and we realize the actual expenses that we have in our, our long-term forecast. And then the last one that we added would be take action this year at a 14% increase. And that was just simply to be parallel to option B, and then move to a every-six-month, starting in May of 2023. The lower panel that you see here, the lower panel presents what the monthly bill impacts would be. And so for those that have the monthly impacts, you would, I'm sorry, have the every-six, every-six-month increases, you would then see an increase in May of 2025. The rest would then be in May of 2024. So this lays out what the impact would be on that typical customer. It's the same typical customer we've talked about in the past. That's a customer consuming 700 cubic feet of water in a month with 5/8 by 3/4 inch meter, single-family residential customer. So that gives you that impact. I, I do want to present one slide. I want to actually thank Commissioner Doan to raising this issue in an email exchange that we had, which is where were we in terms of the typical bill back when we presented this in 2017? So I went back to the 2017 forecast, which is what we used during the rate advisory committee process. And you can see there that at that time, we were forecasting increases of about 12 and a half percent per year, and that the typical bill was going to get up by the end of the program, at the end of this 2025 period, to about $104. We're nowhere through all the construction risks. We're nowhere through all the financing risks. But even with the plan that we're presenting here, that we'd be still about $10 under what we presented in 2017. So I appreciate that thought and thought it was worth putting into a chart and presenting it to you here tonight. With that, that concludes the information I was presenting as part of this. I'm available to answer any questions or take any additional guidance so that we can come back in April if, if you want us to do further analysis.
Paul, this is, this is Jim Doan. If we decide to do things differently than we've told the Budget Committee, do we have to reconvene the Budget Committee?
That's a great question. No, we don't need to, we don't technically need to. There's no Oregon requirement or a local budget law requirement that would require that we reconvene the Budget Committee, because the Budget Committee appropriates money, and this is actually a revenue. So we don't have to. Having said that, it's not a bad practice to keep the Budget Committee informed. And, and you will remember, Commissioner Doan, when you were on the Rate Advisory Committee, that we, you were the liaison from the board, one of the two liaisons from the board. We actually had Craig Hopkins from the Budget Committee on the Rate Advisory Committee, too. So keeping them informed and apprised of this is a, a good practice, but it is not required under Oregon Local Budget Law.
How about the Rate Advisory Committee? We're under what we told them in 2017. Would that be a, I mean, I'm not saying do it or don't do it. I'm saying legally, do we have to do it?
No, there's no legal requirement to do that. The only legal requirement you have is we have to send a notice to our customers no more than 30 days prior to you having a public hearing to adopt rates. So that's, now, we will have a public outreach that's going to be considerably more in-depth than that, because that's a best practice, and our customers deserve that. We do want the Rate Advisory Committee to look in depth at our rate design and some of the issues about affordability. Actually, Tom has his hand up. Oh, oh, Tom, why don't you go ahead?
Yeah, well, I, I just want to remind that as part of the Thursday memo, we, we have been informing both the board and the Budget Committee about these increases as part of Thursday memo. I do think we need to take one additional step as we clarify what actions we're actually going to take here. I, I think we need to probably invite the board, the, the Budget Committee to a board meetings, to this kind of a meeting, and just, just let them know that we are taking this action and, and why, and give them a chance, just because I think it's really good practice to do that. So I, I, I'm strongly encouraging that's the approach we take. And then again, with the Rate Advisory Committee, I think informing, you know, the members have changed. The, yeah, the, many of the people, I think, Paul, you can correct me, but many of the members aren't the same.
Well, so technically, the Rate Advisory Committee that we had was an ad hoc committee that was, that ceased to exist once they delivered the recommendation to the board. So we do not have a Rate Advisory Committee. We need to create one, and we want to talk to the board about that in April. The other thing I would suggest is if, I, I really agree totally with what, what Tom said there in terms of working with the Budget Committee. It's part of using their, you know, using their advice to help us, and it's also keeping them informed and building that relationship. It may be a good time to bring them to a work session so that it's more informal, and we can have more of a dialogue with them, and they can ask their questions, especially around the cost increases.
Paul, this is, this is Jim Doan again. Do we have time to do all the steps we have to do to do a, a higher rate increase in November?
We, we wouldn't get, it, it wouldn't be the ideal situation, because, so let me answer the question. Yes, we can do it. We would structure our public outreach so that we could have open houses in July. We would have a public hearing probably in August. And August and September, we like to have that two-meeting to allow people to come at the open house and then to make public testimony. And then you make a final decision in, in September, after you've had a chance to hear the, the input from the customers. So we have time to do that. But what, where we get pinched, Commissioner Doan, is that ideally, we'd really like to have the Rate Advisory Committee going along with us and providing the board its advice and its recommendations. And I don't think we can do that, because we need to create the Rate Advisory Committee. We need to bring that to the board. The board would appoint them, approve a charter. And by the time we do all that work, we would already be bringing a proposal. However, if the Rate Advisory Committee's scope, if their charter was to look at affordability issues and rate design issues, the fix versus the volume charge, and whether or not we should be looking at how frequent a rate increases. Should we do it every six months? Those things, we could get the Rate Advisory Committee up and running and get recommendations prior to May of 2023, so we could have a public process in the spring of '23 to prepare that. So I think it's in our interest to convene, to create a Rate Advisory Committee. Obviously, we'll need the board's help to do that, and we'll, we'll present information on that to you. And the board will appoint those members, as well as appoint, again, the liaison from the board to the Rate Advisory Committee. We need to get consultants selected and underway. So there's work to be done in that, but I think we can do that and hit that May date and have the Rate Advisory Committee help us in May. The other thing we want to sync this up with is the CIS project. So as the CIS project is going live, which, which is probably going to be the end of this fiscal year, in the beginning of the next fiscal year, that's really not a good time to turn to our, our customer service team and say, can you implement a new rate design as they're trying to go on the go-live? So we want to wait until they get through the post-go-live stabilization. And Andrew Carlstrom can speak more authoritatively on that issue, but we need to coordinate closely with our, with our CIS team to make sure that we're not getting kittywampus on, on that, or is it cattywampus? Whatever the wampus is, we don't want to get there.
Right. Well, thank you, Paul. I appreciate your, your sage advice on this. And, and certainly, a rate advisory committee, I think, would help the, the board substantially in sale, in say, excuse me, in sailing, save, anyway, in, in selling the, the product to our consumers. in selling the product to our constituents. Thank you.
Yes, I'd like to just ask quickly, Andrea, if you have any other... I spoke quite a lot on this, and it's, I just wonder if Andrea Watson has anything she'd like to add before?
No, just we're on board to facilitate whichever direction we get. We'll get the input and the engagement from our customers that we need.
Thank you, Andrea. That's all I had on this, unless you want me to talk about the financial performance. And the goal of that is always to be included in your packet and just see if you have any questions. Oh, thank you, Dave. Dave Krask explained to me it's cattywampus. So I will adjust my, I understand that word. It's cattywampus. But in any event, if you have any questions about that, otherwise, this completes my formal presentation.
All right. Thank you, Paul. And I think cattywampus is like a 20-point word in Scrabble, at least. Unless there are no other questions for Paul or for Tom, or I think Andrea was called in here at the last second for also. If there are no other questions, there would be no further business before the board, and the meeting will be adjourned. Commissioners are reminded, and the applicable staff members are...